I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand and join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
Honored to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Remain standing, please. I'll ask trustee Moochik to lead us in a word of prayer.
Please bow your heads. My most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together here this evening. Lord, we want to thank you for the season because we definitely know that you are the reason. And we want to thank you for all of the blessings that we have, not only personally and in our family, but here at Bastrop BISD. We ask that you please give us wisdom tonight and guide us in a bright direction. We also ask that you please bless us on our way home. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and get started. As I bring some welcomes, can we have Michaela Carney go ahead and start making her way up? First of all, I want to thank y'all for coming to our December meeting. It's our holiday meeting. I know we've got one week left, so everybody be patient. And then we'll have a couple of weeks off. So, Michaela, a little bit about Michaela. She's a junior at Circa. She's gonna speak to the board on perseverance. She's the vice president of the National Arms Society at Circa, an active member of Student Council. She serves on the school newspaper committee. And in between studying her college classes, currently carrying a load of nine hours, Michaela babysits after school and on the weekends. Michaela's mom is Mary. If Ms. Moronis is here, would you please stand to be recognized? Michaela, it's all yours.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Michaela Carney. I'm a junior. I'm a part of the inaugural class at Colorado River Collegiate Academy. I'm here to talk to you tonight about something my school has taught me about myself and about life in general. Too many people take hardships the wrong way. They try to avoid them at all costs. They try to find the easiest roads in life. The reality is that no one can escape tough times. They are a fundamental part of our existence, a promise in everyone's life. The thing is, we shouldn't try to avoid them. We shouldn't try to avoid them, but knowing that they are inevitable, we should embrace the challenges that come with them. Because even though we all talk and walk through the dark tunnels in life, we all have those times where we feel trapped, like we're not good enough to reach our dreams, like giving up would be the easiest option and easiest way out. Those hard times are actually a blessing because through them, we are given the opportunity to persevere, to push forward and keep going. Perseverance is that part of human condition that guides us toward the light out of every dark tunnel. It's what shows us the way, what gives us motivation to not give up on our dreams. When we first enrolled in CRCA, our class was cautioned that we chose a difficult path. We were warned by the administration and the staff that CRCA was an experience unlike any other we had experienced before. They are right. CRCA is not just any regular school. It's one of the hardest schools because of the added responsibilities we have to juggle as high school students who are semitizationlessly enrolled in college classes. Our teachers don't sugarcoat this reality, but instead push us to walk that difficult path to success. They let us know that it is going to be hard, but that if we rely on each other and never give up, we can and will get through it. Perhaps this became the most apparent in our sophomore year. When we were taking our first classes at the ACC campus in Elgin, we realized that no one was holding our hands academically anymore. We were literally on our own as college students at ACC, and we struggled to ride on each other for support and motivation. But those struggles through and the difficulties of feeling inadequacy, we learned that we could just keep going, keep pushing through. On that hard road, we had picked up the skill of perseverance, that never give up attitude. We motivated each other to keep going, learning from our failures and pushing to get through the year. Most importantly, though, we discovered that without these struggles, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to actually build up that perseverance. Without these blessings in disguise from Circa, we wouldn't be prepared for the future challenges that we know we are going to encounter as university students in future colleges and beyond. We wouldn't have learned how to handle all of life's challenges, being a CRCA owl has given me the opportunity to embrace and embody an attitude of perseverance so that I can continue my academic profession and personal journeys. I know that even though the road might be rocky, I can and will get through it. Thank you.
I see your principal back there smiling from ear to ear. Great job. Way to represent Circa. Now, we're gonna start with some special presentations. Dr. Lee?
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to introduce to you Tommy Williams, who is a teacher at Cedar Creek Middle School. He's also the math department chair, and he has a guitar club for students after school. And Mr. Rincon, I want you to know that he didn't spend any class time practicing for this. He was teaching. So, please welcome Mr. Williams.
All right, well, we're almost there, guys. Last week, get a nice break here. I want to say thank you to Ms. Lee for inviting me. That's really very gracious of you. I appreciate that. A song I'm gonna play for you guys today is an old English folk song from the time of King Henry VIII. I'm gonna take him on more of a modern or religious connotation. You probably recognize it when you hear it.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. That was a special treat. Are you gonna leave your guitar here for us to practice with after you're gone?
My wife would kill me.
The next group that I'd like to introduce to you is the varsity choir from Cedar Creek High School, under the direction of Alyssa Hosking.
Thank you all so much for having us. And as you said, these are members of the varsity choir at Cedar Creek High School. My name is Alyssa Hosking, and I just want to say I apologize for my appearance. It is finals week, and you know, teachers, when you get the option to wear jeans, we're gonna sing. So, we're gonna sing a couple of songs for you. The first one is just an old carol, and then we'll do "Hatter's Uncle" by the Little Christmas, which was featured on our Christmas concert. And then, for our last section, we're gonna do "Frosty the Snowman." If you would like to sing along, please, you'll be hanging so.
This way, guys. Should we sing?
Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. He's sitting with his reindeer, pulling on the reins. Bells are ringing, children singing, all is merry and bright. Hang your socks and say your prayers, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. He's got a hat that's filled with toys for boys and girls again. Hear the snipers jingle-jangle, oh, what beautiful sight! So jump in bed and cover your head, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. He doesn't care if you're rich or poor, he loves you just the same. Santa Claus knows we're all God's children, that makes everything right. So fill your hearts with Christmas cheer, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight. Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus, right down Santa Claus Lane. He'll come around when the chimes ring out, that's Christmas morning again. Peace on earth will come to all if we just follow the light. So let's give thanks to the Lord of love, 'cause Santa Claus comes tonight.
Let your heart be light. From now on, our troubles will be out of sight. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Make the yuletide gay. From now on, our troubles will be miles away. Here we are, a single day. Happy golden days are yours. If the friends who are dear to us gather in your hearts once more. Through the years, we all will be together. Give the faith a laugh. Hey, the shining star upon the highest boughs. Have yourself a merry little Christmas night.
Frosty the Snowman was a jolly happy soul. With a corn cup pipe and a button nose, and two eyes made out of coal. Frosty the Snowman is a fairy tale, they say. He plays with snow, but the children know how he came to life one day. There must have been some magic in that old silk cap they found. For when they placed it on his head, he began to dance around. Oh, Frosty the Snowman was alive as he could be. And the children say he could laugh and play, just the same as you and me. Thumpety-thump, thump-thump-thumpety-thump-thump, look at Frosty go. Thumpety-thump, thump-thump-thumpety-thump-thump, over hills of snow. Frosty the Snowman knew the sun was hot that day. So he said, "Let's run and we'll have some fun now before I melt away." Down to the village with a broomstick in his hand. Running here and there, all around the square, saying, "Catch me if you can." He led them down the streets of town, right to the traffic cop. And he only paused a moment when he heard them all were stopped. For Frosty the Snowman has a hurry on his way. But he waved goodbye, saying, "Don't you cry, I'll be back again someday." Thumpety-thump, thump-thump-thumpety-thump-thump, look at Frosty go. Thumpety-thump, thump-thump-thumpety-thump-thump, over hills of snow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Hosking.
Happy holidays.
We were... I didn't know it was a contest. I like to win.
I wanna grab the mic.
Your table one was singing off.
TK, hey.
Do you need some help?
TK had the head going.
Do you need some help?
Feneh was the only one singing.
Somebody had to carry the table.
I was singing.
That was me.
Oh, my goodness.
That was great.
I didn't know all the words, but to that was all.
But you had the chorus down.
We always love to hear from the kids, starting with the Circa speech and then on with that. So, it just goes to show us that what the effect of what's going on on the campuses having on the kids. So, we're gonna have actually a campus spotlight. We ask administrator to come each month, and this spotlight tonight is gonna be Cedar Creek Middle School. It's gonna be Mr. Rincon is gonna come up and talk a little bit about what's going on out at Cedar Creek Middle. You gonna sing, Edgar?
Well, it's gonna be hard to top that, you know. So, thank you for having me after the entertainment. Well, good evening, board, members of the board. I wanted to say, Mr. Williams still here? Did you leave already? He has many talents. Not only does he head the guitar club at our school, he also is our math department head. So, that takes some talent. He is a crucial member of the team, and I really appreciate what he does there at school. But some other great things that we are doing at Cedar Creek Middle School is several things. I want to focus on three tonight. We are focusing on, for me personally, safety. Safety is really big. So, what we started at Cedar Creek Middle School, and the first time ever in that school, we provided IDs to every student there at the campus. At first, they were saying, "Why do we need IDs? You know we come here." It very well might be that we know they come here, but just in case. I said, "It could be that one day, we don't recognize somebody, they don't have their ID, we're definitely gonna stop them and question them." So, that's something that hasn't been done, and we're gonna be doing it from now on, not only for them to have it in our middle school, but to practice when they go to Cedar Creek High School, because we know that that is one of their expectations. When you decided to install that best of you, that was an excellent idea. I appreciate that. That adds to the safety of the school. Parents stop me all the time and say, "Great idea." They have to wait for us to greet them, and, you know, the better they... safer they feel, the better. So, that's one thing that we're doing at Cedar Creek Middle School. The other thing that we are focusing on, and of course, is and always is the instruction. We are one of two campuses that have the SIM model, the Strategic Instruction Model, that focuses on planning the lessons in a way that it teaches learners to learn, and it's going great so far. We had our first formal SIM walkthrough by Raise Up Texas, and they definitely said that we're in the right direction. So, teachers are getting used to it. I want to say that. You know, they're getting used to it. But we're getting another model, excuse me, another piece of it when we come back in January, and they said they're excited about that. So, that's one great thing that we're doing there. The third one is the PBIS, a model that we have at our school. We really wasn't active in the past, but now we are definitely putting it in place and actively using it at our campus. I just came from my third PBIS meeting in two weeks because we're planning to roll this out as soon as the students come back. We're gonna review expectations. We're gonna review a reward system in our own way. So, we think that kids will appreciate that because I'm tired of focusing on some of the negative stuff. Let's flip it. If we focus on the positive, you know, the others will fall suit. So, that's what we're doing in addition to that, is we are establishing an acronym. I know that Cedar Creek High School has SOAR, so we implemented the same thing. It means a little bit different, the acronym. The first one is, the S means self-discipline. That's really big personally, that you have to have self-discipline in order for you to do 100%, 100% of the time, and I always tell my students that. The organization is important. That's the O. It's important for, not only right now to start and getting the habit of, but it's gonna help them in the future in high school and in post-secondary education. The A is acceptance. You know, we all, we live in the 21st century, everybody is different, and we need to accept them just the way they are. And then, of course, one of the most important ones, the S is important to me, but also the R, respect. You gotta respect one another, and I think with the PBIS program that we're actively gonna put in place, it's gonna help with that. For me, as you know or don't know, I'm from Opaso. This is my fifth month here, as of December 8th, and so far, it is great. So, I appreciate you, that you are giving me the opportunity to run a school like Cedar Creek Middle School. We have challenges ahead of us, but we're very excited to take them on. I wanted to thank the BISD administrative team here at the service center, because they have been nothing but supportive, and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Edgar.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's good, always good to hear from the campus leaders what's going on on campuses. Now, we're gonna move to open forum. I'll call Ms. Rebecca Bennett up, and she's going to speak tonight, looks like on the survey. Here we go. Thanks, Rebecca.
Well, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm here again, as I am every December, to bring you the Bastrop Federation of Teachers' survey of employee satisfaction. And I think every year, we can learn a lot about what is working well in BISD and what still needs to be worked on for improvement. And I know the district did their own survey this year, and I was really happy to see that, and I was looking at some of the results today. One difference, though, with our survey is that we have results broken out by campus, which might be useful, and we have about 20 pages of comments. And so, if, you know, if you have a couple hours by the fireside to read, I think you might find it interesting and revealing. And please let me know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to talk with you about it. My contact information is on the survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly take a look at that. Now, we're gonna move on to superintendent's reports and a board discussion. That's up to come. I guess while we're here, we'll talk a little bit about the bond election, the TRE. As we know, we know the results of those. We did have a board meeting and talked a little bit about the possibilities, and the board as a whole felt like a little bit of it was timing. The district certainly needs some of the things that we asked for. We, as a board collectively, think that we're gonna turn back around and we're gonna go back out. We're not going to sit around because we need those things. So, I can open this up to any of the board members to let them know how they feel, but I do want to applaud the efforts of the administrative team, the way they went out and sold this bond to the community. And I'll also tell the board how much I appreciate their efforts in attending a lot of those meetings that were held on the campuses and at other functions and events. So, a lot of effort went into this. It wasn't the right time. The district definitely needs some of these things. So, the board collectively thinks that we're gonna turn around and we're gonna ask the community to do it again. And we may change a few things. Steve's gonna head that up. The board's gonna have some more discussion, but Steve's got some ideas, and we're gonna go back out. I'd like to hear the comments from any board members.
Yeah, James, let me just go off what you said, and then obviously want to hear from anybody else. To that end, I appreciate the discussion that we took place in the workshop, and it really gave us incentive. We were already thinking about doing something, but it really helped us frame some of our questions there. Currently is a post-election survey that's out, being promoted as widely as possible for people to go to our website and fill it out. It's very short, doesn't take very long, and we've already gotten great response in the first week that we've had it out, and we're gonna continue to get more response. We're gonna leave it up throughout the entire holiday break. And so, just very quickly, we wanted to find out, you know, ask people some demographic information, and then ask them about their voting preference, and then the reasons why they may have voted in the way they did. We feel like we're gonna be able to glean some information, and then we can all collectively look at that information together and make the most educated decision about how we might go out, the adjustments that you talked about. But I appreciate that, and just want to let y'all know that's what we're doing right now. We're getting some information to just reinforce the things that we've already talked about.
Any other board member have any comments?
Well, James, I'd like to publicly thank the Chamber of Commerce and the We Believe Committee, as well as the people who served on the PAC, although they spent a lot of time and effort, and they were definitely as passionate about it as all of us, and so it's great to see the community behind it. Like you said, timing was a big issue, but not just some of those needs, every single one of those needs is needed in both of those bond packages, and so look forward to May coming up.
Fantastic.
Well, I think it was a great opportunity through the presentations and the public awareness is to really build a basis of knowledge in the community of what it is we're really looking towards for the next 10 years. This is a forward-looking plan. It's not waiting until it's already a problem that we're having to deal with. It's a matter of looking at our future and seeing for certain what things that we do need to retool and repurpose facilities we have. It's a very dollar-wise, I think, approach, and I think with some additional tooling and looking at some other possible applications of that money, that we can really put ourselves in a good position 10 years from now. I have two sons who came through the school district here. One graduated '06, the other one '08, and they lived through the three rounds of bond proposals to try and get the new high school, performing arts center, and stadium, which I don't think anyone in this community can say, "We're sorry, we spent that money." All you gotta do is go to those places and see how useful they are for this community and necessary. And I really felt at the time, sorry for my kids to feel that the community was not somehow addressing their needs and not putting them, giving them the attention and the resources that were necessary for them to be successful, I mean, as they could have been, or at least in more comfortable learning environments than they were forced to deal with. So, I really, I think y'all laid a great groundwork of information in the community, built a foundation to build on. We do some more public, get some more public input and do some more public presentations, the slightly more streamlined or whatever we come up with, but that's kind of what the direction we were talking about from the workshop. Because it is a need. It's not a want, it's a need, and it's money well-invested in this community. Because if this community should be healthy and continue to enjoy property valuation growth, you have to have schools. And it's a... you have to have schools. And it's a, it's a very cheap investment to pay a few hundred dollars a year, in my opinion. To pay a few hundred dollars a year additional in property taxes to see the increase in your property value over that time period. I think that's a, you know, it's, it's an investment in our future in many ways.
I'd just like to reiterate what Billy said is, even though it didn't pass, it really, we, we need to look on it as an opportunity, because it was a way for us to get out and talk to the public about our schools and for people to understand more about the schools. And I think that the presentations and everyone that was involved in it, it was, there was a lot of work put into it, and I know I appreciate that. I know the whole board probably speak for that, that, that we really appreciate all the work that was done. But it wasn't an effort that, that didn't, doesn't pay back, because I believe that it really was an opportunity for us to get out into the public and share some information and talk about our schools.
Great comments. We'll now move on. Superintendent Murray's gonna talk about a resolution.
Yeah, you know, we, we heard about the A through F quite some time ago. In fact, even before it was adopted by the legislature and, and then pushed forward by Texas Education Agency. And I, and I just remember hearing that, just even initially, that if we were gonna go to that type of grading system, as a rating system for accountability in the state of Texas, I just have felt, since I heard of its inception, that I felt like it was one of the more regressive things that was gonna happen in Texas public education in a long, long time. The powers that be went forward. They're still initiating and going forward with the, with the plans for us to have an A through F. In fact, in fact, this spring, early this spring, we're supposed to get a hypothetical A through F grade based on our test scores and whatever other factors they're going to put into computation, calculation, and they're supposed to get a hypothetical A through F. So, but there's been a lot of groundswell of, of folks saying, you know, "We really think that we should have a different accountability system, a different way to look at how schools are truly doing, not just based on a one-time sit-down test, not based on some things that are pushed our way towards other entities and other governing bodies, but possibly be a growth out of the actual local community." And so because of that, there's been a real grassroots effort. Texas Association of School Administrators has put out a call for all districts to, to adopt a resolution. And tonight, I'm gonna read that resolution. Board can certainly ask any questions they might have after I read the resolutions for discussion. And then we would ask the board if they choose to, at this time, to, to adopt that resolution, so we can show our support with the many other districts across the state of Texas who are showing their concern with the A through F accountability rating system that is, is coming our way very quickly. Let me read the resolution real quick. Well, it won't be quick, but I'll read it. "State of Texas, whereas the Texas Legislature has enacted legislation that requires the Commissioner of Education to implement a public school rating system that would assign A through F grades to schools and districts beginning with the 2017-18 school year. And whereas at least 16 states have implemented a similar rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts, and to date, there is no definitive research that suggests that these ratings have improved student or school performance. And whereas, in a recent statewide survey conducted by the State Board of Education, an overwhelming majority of Texans do not want high-stakes standardized test scores to serve as the primary basis for a public school rating system. And whereas, the majority, 55% in parentheses, of the A through F grades are based on the state of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness, or STAR, a high-stakes standardized test that does not accurately measure student learning. And whereas, the STAR provides little meaningful information to guide student learning, inform teachers, or report academic progress to parents. And whereas, the Commissioner's proposed rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts includes five domains and numerous unrelated indicators to determine a single grade, leaving the public with an invalid disconnected reflection of school quality. And whereas, the Commissioner's proposed rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts creates a false impression about students, ignores the unique strengths of each school, and unfairly reduces each student's worth to the school's assigned grade. And whereas, we believe in the tenants set out in creating a new vision for public education in Texas, dated TASA 2008, that was the visioning document. And our goal is to transform education in Bastrop ISD in accordance with these tenants. And whereas, we embrace meaningful accountability that informs students, parents, and teachers about the learning needs of each student and each school. And whereas, we believe our state's future prosperity relies on a high-quality education system that prepares students for college and careers. And without such a system, Texas's economic competitiveness and ability to contract, to attract new business will falter. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Bastrop Independent School District Board of Trustees calls on the Texas Legislature to repeal the rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts, and develop a community-based accountability system that empowers school districts to design their own internal systems of assessment and accountability that, while meeting general state standards, allows districts to innovate and customize curriculum and instruction to meet the needs and interests of each student and their communities. And be it further resolved, that this new system should reduce the use of high-stakes standardized tests, encompass multiple assessments, reflect greater validity, and more accurately reflect what students know and can do in terms of the rigorous standards. Passed and approved on this day, again, the date and a possibility of our board members also signing if they approve such resolution.
Well, thank you for reading that, Steve. We, the board has got some information on this from Steve that we, we've already read up on a little bit. I, for one, am gonna look to entertain a motion to adopt this, but we can also have any discussion that we want.
I still move.
Okay. The movement is seconded to adopt the resolution as read and presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Absolutely. We're gonna move on down to the consent agenda. If nobody wants to pull anything off the consent agenda, we will entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. It's item three, A, B, C, and D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Action items, we've just took action on two things, so won't be any action at this time, other than what we've just done. It is required of the board president to update everybody on the continuing ed hours received to date. Looks like all the board members have met their continuing education requirement for the 2016 year. So that's, that's great. Any, Barry, you have something tonight?
No, sir.
Nope. Okay.
Just information.
Information only. Other than that, we, we, before we entertain a motion, we really want to just tell everybody, one more week, and we want you to enjoy a well-deserved two weeks off. Have a great Christmas and a, a very happy New Year. And that's actually all we have tonight. Moving seconded to adjourn. Thank you again for coming. Once again, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. You got anything to sign? You got anything to sign tonight? You got the resolution.